Evening.
Good evening.
Troy Garan, Tom Millian is Gordon Andrews.
Hello, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Any challenges?
I just want to thank you for setting this second appointment in. I very much appreciate it.
Okay. Gordon, you want to start?
Sure. What type of experience do you have with municipal budgets?
I had a lot of experience with state and federal budgets.
Okay.
Municipal somewhat. I was the president of the Randolph Women's Club and also the marketing director. So for about five years. And I wrote grants for preservation and for our building. It's a historic building in Randolph where, which we own, the Randolph Women's Club owns. And also cultural grants and things like that. But the preservation grant and the planning grant came through municipal funding. So I guess a few years, but the majority of my experience is with state and federal.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to spend any time or visit the facility?
I have not, sir. I don't believe it's open on weekends. Is it? I...
That's a good question. I can't answer that. I don't believe so.
No, and I work in Boston, so...
No, that's fine. I'm just curious because the work atmosphere could lend to your experience.
Yes, I looked at it online. I did drive by it the first time and a couple of times over the weekend I've driven by it. So I've seen it from the outside, but not from the inside.
Okay. Why do you feel that you should be the candidate who's chosen to take this position?
Well, first of all, I am willing to take a rather substantial cut in pay to lead this organization in accordance with the auspices of the town and also the board, leading in whatever direction that you see is necessary. I have all the requisite skills listed in your position description, and I do consider myself somewhat of a subject matter expert in elder care as far as service, provision of services, direct care, and the development of programs. So those are the main reasons. And I want to take a step down. It's kind of like downsizing your house. I want and need to downsize my job. And you know, I'm looking for a home, someplace that I can work with elders. My favorite group of people, although I do also work with very small children and people with disabilities.
Do you have any idea what type of programs are already offered at the council meeting?
I had, you know, I thought I was going to be able to stop home. I was not able to do that. And I know that you gave that to me the last time, but I unfortunately was not able to pick that up. So I...
Do you have any thoughts at all of what type of programs might be served?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So I've worked with many different councils on aging because when I was a transitional care liaison with the hospitals and councils on aging, elderly housing, and so forth for home care, I had to work with the councils. And I also have taught classes at the councils on aging. So for instance, here I have Walt Fenn. I have Hina. I've worked very closely with Plymouth. We have a Peter Brundt Center. Here's Sunnyside from Randolph. And this is Stoughton Council on Aging. I think this is Milton. So I'm very, very familiar with the programming.
What type of programs would you initiate if you were to get the job over here?
Yeah, I'm not going to look at this because that's cheating. So I'll pull out my own, what I have done and what I would be interested and knowledgeable about. So one of the things that, oopsie, that, okay. One of the things that I am, my undergrad is in nutrition and psychology. And then I have a master's degree in education. So I have taught a lot of health, fitness, dance...
Ms. Leaks?
Oh, this one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I feel badly having my dad to you.
We have, we're just the audience.
Yeah, it's fine.
Oh, okay. So, excuse me.
It's fine, it's fine.
So I have a lot of that experience. I also have worked with the mayor's office on elder affairs in Boston for several years. I helped them plan and run the senior Olympic Games, the same thing in Randolph. I've worked with the Alzheimer's Association, MDA Autism Speaks. Once again, very health, fitness, dance, wellness, swimming. I'm a National Board of Medicine certified health and wellness coach. So I just passed my five-hour exam. I was grandfathered in because I've taught nutrition for so many years. And organic gardening, cooking, diets, meals. I teach online through Webinix or Skype, which also helps if there's a limit on space. So I've been doing that for many years now. I've used We, Dance Dance Revolution, things like that. And then I develop my own online classes. So study skills, how to achieve online degrees. Now, most elders can receive a free degree, a four-year degree through the state. And I have a listing of all the colleges that allow that. So I would be helping with study skills and things like that. I put on poetry slams. I've had art galleries, talent shows, musical events, taken or brought in musicals, ballet choir, the BSO. I have, my husband's a full-time professor at Berklee College of Music. So I have access to all the students. He teaches at NEC. So I've brought them out to the assisted living and home care. They put on free concerts. It's part of their requirement for community service. Meditation, relaxation, massage. I've put on many, many health fairs, including Reiki Healing. I've brought in officers for frauds and scams and protective services. I've worked with Citizens Action for decreased pharmaceuticals. I've helped develop brain cafes using Lubosity. That's another online service. I've brought in Frida Brabalski, who's a social worker. She's now retired. She wrote books and participated in The Power of Laughter, so How to Get People Laughing, animals, pets, petting zoos, show and tell, book clubs, travel. So these are all the things that I have done already in my past, and I would be more than happy to do them again. You know, I have a lot of things that I can show you that I have done. In the nutrition realm, anything soup to nuts. And I already have been presenting at councils on aging and Hebrew Senior Life. So I've already developed nutrition programs for them and worked with their chef to create healthy menus. The other thing I've created is art cookbooks with some of the councils on aging. How to, I think I brought it with me, how, oh yes, this is a good one. Good food on a tight budget. How to cook differently. There's all kinds of different things. I created a senior radio station using my husband's music. I did it online. I interviewed my elders, and we had a weekly program happening, which was really cool, out of the senior center. And, well, there's just a lot. I mean, I'm kind of an idea person, so I don't have any lack of ideas. I'm constantly operating. So Tai Chi eases depression in the elderly.
And so, not to cut you off, you have an extensive background, so it's like...
Yes, sir.
But how many people have you ever supervised immediately under you and had the responsibility of hiring or firing?
Right now, I have 73 people.
Work that you hire directly?
Yes, that I directly supervise. I service 8,000 dual-certified Medicare and Mass Health residents in Boston home care.
Are you familiar with and can assist with the preparation of forms, applications for Medicare?
Absolutely, and Mass Health.
Mass Health, which is challenging.
It is. They are. We just got retrained on that again. So the Mass Health folks came out and went over our staff with it because they, you know, there's a little bit of a turnover, as you can imagine. The work is difficult. And so we have to retrain frequently. We just had them in.
I just had to do it for my 99-year-old mother.
Oh, my goodness.
It was interesting working with Mass Health.
Yeah.
And I don't mean that in a good way either.
No, I know. It's, that form is very long. I thought I actually would have brought that. I may have it in my...
It isn't so much the length as the, and I don't want to get into this now. It's your interview, but it's the phrasing of the questions that they're ambiguous. You're not sure how to answer them. And not that you're trying to do it deceptively, but just to do it accurately.
That's why in my current world, sometimes it takes the whole care team to do those interpretations. So we've got a nurse, we've got a case manager, we've got a family member, and then we have the member. And it is complex. So those are the cases I deal with every day.
So how do you deal with dementia?
Well, it depends on what type, well, so I guess the current statistics are that 80% of dementia is caused by Alzheimer's, but I don't know if that's completely accurate. I just got out of another training seminar last week on dementia and...
Have you, have you actually had hands-on experience with someone with dementia?
Yes, I have.
How did you go about dealing with that?
Seven years. How did I go about that? Well, first, I got trained. I went to the Alzheimer's Association and I was trained. That's what led me into long-term care, in fact. She had a fall, and she was fairly young, and she was having TIA's. And we thought that perhaps it was a brain injury, a TBI. But it turned out she also had Alzheimer's symptoms. So the first thing I did was get as much knowledge as possible. Then I got with the Mayo Clinic, and I also trained under them and read their book and continue to work now. In fact, I have things here from, that's current, from the Alzheimer's Association. So I never stop training myself, and I always want to be as current as possible. So, let's see here. Well, this one's on elder health. I just took that one. Here. Okay. There's some other things. I don't think I brought her certificate, but I just, I just also attended an all-day training on mental illness through the state. And these are the things now that we're working on, different people identifying dementia, dementia care collaborative. This is with MGH. So this is what I'm actually also sending my employees to right now. So we all have to be trained the same way because in home care, almost everybody has dementia. It's, the statistics are very high. So when you're talking about filling out those forms or even, you know, remembering who your caregiver is for the day, it's really confusing for them. So I train the same as they train. We all train together. And so this is one, Research Symposium on Alzheimer's Disease. I'm scheduled to go to that right now. That's through the Alzheimer's Association. Nature as a therapeutic intervention. And these are all in the next month. Of course, I told you I was working on Boston memory cafes. So when I was a transitional care liaison, I had to be trained in order to diagnose, I don't use the word diagnose...
Identify.
Identify, thank you. And assess the level so that we would know how to proceed with the care plan. And so I have a solid knowledge of people with dementia and Alzheimer's. I know Alzheimer's, sometimes the emotional part is much greater. Behaviors can be much more difficult as well. Repetitive behaviors, things like that. Yeah, speech cognition can go quite a bit quicker. I knew at one of the assisted living centers I worked at, which was Alzheimer-based or dementia, we had to have the rugs different colored and the walls different colors so that a resident walking out of the elevator could recognize the difference between the rug in the elevator and the carpet they were stepping on.
That's interesting.
Yeah. And the same thing with the walls, so that they can recognize where the bathroom was versus the kitchen. So there are all kinds of little tricks to...
Have you ever dealt in a situation where you didn't have those type of resources available to you?
Oh, sure. Most assisted livings don't have that. Most home care, most people in the home don't have that. I still go out on home care visits with my staff. I just did three in a row last week. And yeah, they're just filled, you know, corridors clutter everywhere. Very difficult even to get the member to remember who we are, let alone go over the, you know, the biannual or quarterly reassessment. So all the time. That's really our client base, and that's what I have worked with in the past. So, yes.
It seems like you've had the opportunity to avail yourself of a lot of training and seminars and such. In our facility, with more or less limited staff, it would be a lot more hands-on. Are you okay with that? You'd be involved a lot more directly, I'm assuming?
I love that, in fact. I miss working with the elder population and that population in particular. My mother, like I said, I had her for seven years. And working in assisted living, I dealt daily. They would come into my office, even though I was doing programs and marketing, they knew me. I was their point person. So they'd come, you know, toddling in and, you know, just having sometimes some off-the-wall conversations and things like that. And I was, the main thing is to stay calm and be able to redirect and, you know, knowing not to touch and do things, you know, physical, no loud, no yelling, nothing to upset the person. And so then, you know, depending on the person and on their care plan, and you may have things at the council on aging per individual that will state, you know, their particular situation and how to handle them. Maybe there's a daughter or a son who will explain that process because it's very individual. And of course, I would adhere to that.
So I guess for the town of Halifax, the council on aging is really running a shoestring budget and really counts on the volunteers. So what kind of experience do you have working with volunteer staff and how to manage them a little different than you would an employee?
Yeah. So, oops. So I was the, like I said, the marketing director and the president of the Randolph Women's Club. I just stepped down last year, and they're all volunteers. I was a volunteer. So I had 60 volunteers every time we did an event or, you know, anything. So we wanted to fundraise for something or another or give to the veterans or provide scholarships for our high school students, all volunteers. So I specialize in motivational interviewing. That's what my health coaching certificate is in, and I use those techniques.
Okay. It seems like the, with your experience, it seems like the, would be a different stage of activity at the council versus what it seems like your experience is right now.
Oh, okay.
Where, and is that something that you're looking for? And is it change like that?
Yes. That's what I, my opening statement. I am so ready for a downsizing. I won't be able to continue the pace. I don't want to. I almost gave my notice last week anyway, just to, you know, say I'm going to be done at the end of October. And I, you know, so today I helped them actually, plugged them into the health fair at Lantana, which is next Thursday, I mean, the recruitment fair. And I said, you know, please recruit for me. I will try to help you. But yeah, this is not, it's over the top. And I thought, when I accepted the position, that it was an ongoing running program for 13 years, I had no idea that it was a change organization and that all the policies had just been, are new. So 60 employees have left, and I've been working for like 10 people. And so I come home at night and I crash. I don't see, I barely see my family. I don't see my friends. It's not healthy, and I don't want anything near that going forward. You know, I'd be, and I don't even like the train. I drove into Boston today because the subway, ever since that train derail, I don't trust it. You know, I can't leave until 4:30, and I thought, well, goodness, I'm going to be on the 4:40 train, and then I might never make it here. We could be stranded in Quincy, and that will be the end of the interview, you know? So...
Okay. Well, that makes sense why you're, the scale of jobs is a little different than what...
Yeah, right, right. And we're trying, yeah, trying to get a handle on whether this would satisfy you maybe.
I can do anything. You can plug me into anything. And, you know, I really don't mind developing programs or, you know, any way you need things done, I'm willing to do it. So I do have a lot of energy, but right now, a lot of it is just being on overdrive. You know, I'm so wired all the time that it's, it's just not healthy. And, you know, I think that having come from the Randolph Women's Club and really enjoying that, that's a very good comparison. And all the people there, the average age is about 70 or 75. So I was the youngest person. Now, we recruited some younger people than me, but I think that's a good comparison. And then the home care agencies I worked for also were quite small. They were mom and pops. So nurses are us and Tracer in Brockton. They're both, you know, very, very small organizations. So I, you know, I managed just maybe one person or two people that were out in the field helping.
How many grants have you written? And how successful have you been with grants?
I'm good. I'm a very grant writer. Just let me try to pull that out for you. Other than the one for the Randolph Women's Club, oh, sugar. I sometimes need to take both. Sorry.
You're going to spread out here.
I can?
Yeah, me too.
That might be helpful. So starting back in the day, I helped develop a, the North Shore Community Foundation in the 90s. It's now the Essex Foundation. I wrote the state grant for the Ford Foundation, I was in graduate school. I helped start a food co-op for Kate Anne. I helped write grants for that. Farmers markets in the 90s before they were even an entity. So I contracted with a little cap agency, and I went around the state to five key places. I got us all to meet in Worcester. We hammered out a platform, and I wrote a grant that lasted seven years for a little teeny agency in Gloucester, and they still have farmers markets to this day. I helped, I co-founded with a few other women the Mass Dance Festival. Again, we're all volunteers. I wrote cultural grants through that, through the Mass Cultural Council, Adams Grant, a lot of family foundations, like the Cabot Foundation. I was successful with those. Tobacco Control. I wrote grants from the CDC, block grants, hunger, child hunger, BRAC, state and federal, WIC, of course, DPH, and Project Fred, and then the Women's Club, the municipal grants. And there might be a few others in there, but I'm just overlooking.
Have you ever been to a town meeting before?
Yes, sir, I have.
You spoke before to town meeting?
I have.
How would you go about convincing a group to support a new building for the council on aging?
Stolen question.
Oh, well...
I borrowed it.
That happens to be one of my, I think, I'm a very good persuasive thinker and speaker, and I do my homework. So I prepare very, very carefully, and I work with the people that I need to work with, and I have my talking points. And unlike some people, I don't go off my script. So I can read a teleprompter, I can read my notes, but I really try to stick to what we've discussed. Not that I'm not impromptu or creative, but if we've gone through all the trouble to develop a plan of action, I really want to deliver that well. And I can say right now, I've been working with our committee in Randolph. I've been to many, many town council meetings. I know that town councilors, I was very close to the former town manager and now the new town manager, the public health nurse. And we are still fighting the garbage dump on the whole Randolph line. So that's one of the things. And also, I am working with, I'm part of the Randolph Community Health Needs Assessment Project, the town of Randolph and a Metropolitan Area Planning Council on Channel 22. So this is another grant. But this is working on the determinants of aging for high-risk populations and health equity. So this is another area where I get to go and speak in public and deliver this programming. So I really enjoy that.
There's occasions where you're going to be working with younger families too that avail themselves of services from the center. Is that something you're comfortable with?
I work with all ages. I mean, there was a time in my life I was like, let's freeze them at six and thaw them out when they're 18. But I've gotten over that.
Yeah, 25 is better, but...
Yes, 25. But I was, you know, a teacher. So I had my college at K through 12 teaching years. In fact, I'm a licensed K through 12 educator in health, nutrition, dance, and fitness. So during my teaching years, I just did a little bit in transitional care to keep my hand in it so I didn't forget what that was all about. And then I taught in college, K through 12, and I taught at Tarts Daycare in Dorchester and Rockspurry. And I have a very good reference from them, the owners. So I really like all ages, and I like working with young minds as well. I kind of, as a coach, I like to bring everybody to their maximum potential. That's what I love. That's who I am. That's my mission in life. So, and if it's an organization that can go along with that, great. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I was just going to ask about technology, but you covered a lot of online classes, and you seem like you're very comfortable with technology.
Yes, sir, I am. And I taught using Moodle. First, it was Blackboard, then it was Moodle at the college level. I found Moodle, I'm more of a connect the dots person. I like detail, but I'm also a big picture thinker, and I found that Blackboard is somewhat linear. So I was a little bit better with Moodle, and I can upload a lot of photos, and I'm a visual person. So I, I liked that platform a little bit better.
One last question. How do you deal with discipline or releasing a person from the job?
Yeah. I just, believe it or not, had a training. It was seven, eight-hour day trainings through Boston Senior Home Care. I'm grateful for that, on leadership. And part of that leadership program was on discipline. So holding people accountable. So again, as a health coach, I consider a coachable person somebody who is accountable, but also trusts me enough to reach out when they have a problem. So that's what I try to do to the utmost of my ability. I try to create coachable moments. However, since I've been at Boston Senior Home Care, I also have had to let two people go. It was very difficult for me and the staff, but there were, the issues were severe. So to do more with compliance, and I'll just leave it at that. So for me, working with the union, the process is to give a verbal warning or more, I gave many more than one verbal warnings, and I took copious notes. And I let them know, this is a verbal warning. And then if something happened again, or one of the things on the list was violated, and I said, and then I would type up, these are your expectations from this moment forward. This has to be either completed, or these things cannot be repeated. So I'd give them that. And then if I had to do a written warning, again, once again, this is the, that the issue, these are the issues that I have found, put it very clearly in writing, and these are the steps, the corrective action plan that need to be taken, and usually by a date so that they're not floating or floundering, that they have a deadline that they know they have to meet. And then we both sign it. And then senior management would sign it and it goes into their employee file. So then if something, again, egregious happens from that, then that would be the time that they're let go. So there is a process. And when I speak with people and counsel or coach during the verbal warning, then I go through the whole motivational interviewing. So setting smart goals and, you know, asking them open-ended questions and, you know, and saying, why did you do this? I'd be like, how is it that this occurred? You know, can you explain to me how is it that this occurred? And give them, you know, ample time to speak and always be respectful and courteous. And, you know, check my own emotions before I go into a meeting with someone to make sure that I'm grounded because I have been screamed at in my current job. And, you know, the natural emotion would be to scream back, but I am a trained professional. I've been in management for a long time and I would not do that. But this current, most recent training has really given me a lot of other additional skills that I will implement and do implement.
How does that extend for you to, let's say, unruly participants and/or volunteers should that type of occasion occur? How do you deal with participants that are, let's say, out of control?
Yeah, I will, you mean at an event?
Well, in just every day, in a participatory way.
Oh, okay, in the, yeah. I kind of have the, I might have the policy listed on the wall or something. A visual saying, you know, these are the expectations for the day, nothing too drastic. And then if somebody were, you know, I'm assuming there are other people in the building at the time, maybe a program leader or somebody, a couple of people. Okay, so if somebody reported it to me or I observed it, I would go up and quietly, you know, ask the person, you know, to either speak with me outside or something like that and have a quiet conversation, not in public. And then go about it that way. And then if it happened again or continued to happen, I would walk the person out, you know, into, if there's an office, I don't even know. No.
It's a bathroom.
No office.
There's an office.
Okay. And then, you know, sit them down, show them the, you know, these are the expectations. Explain why it's important that other people are being disturbed and ask them the same, go through the same process. What is it that's bringing you to this point right now? Can you explain to me what's going on in your life? And then, you know, take it from there. And I guess if they were, you know, if there was anything that was endangering to anybody else or I would absolutely remove them from the building. And I hope that there's a process for that here. So, yeah.
Well, there could be a process once it's developed.
There could be a process. Okay, yeah, so...
Any questions?
Well, because I didn't have a chance to review the position description. I looked at it a couple of days ago. But have I covered the major areas that you're looking for?
I believe so.
More so.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, you covered the questions that...
Yeah. A lot of questions we didn't ask because you'd already answered them. So that was good. No, that's all right. That's all good.
Okay. Just, I mean, what are your expectations for somebody in the position for maybe the first three months, six months, one year? You're looking for a new building, right?
That's going to be the challenge, that and actually functioning in the existing building. You know, we sort of alluded to it when your question of an office came up. Privacy is not a big...
It's a major issue.
Yeah. So there's going to be some challenges in that area until we can light onto a facility. We've made several attempts over the last, what's 20 years now at least. And for various reasons, things haven't worked out. And of course, the money's always in competition with something else, be it the school, be it fire equipment, be it what have you. There's always a challenge there. So we're looking for somebody who can help us there. And it sounds like you've got some background that could be useful to us.
Well, I'm a strong senior advocate. Like I said, I took care of my mother. She was young. I think she was a senior when she became injured and then her dementia accelerated so quickly. It was like my brother and I, we didn't even recognize her. It was very difficult. We had to go through all the processes of trying to find her, but she gave away all her money. Through the mail, cash. So I've been there. I've done it, you know? I have a great deal of respect and concern, you know, and admiration. And so I'm a very strong advocate and I can make a very strong case whether working with K-12 or the fire department or churches, any church worship, any place. Seniors are valued. What our elder population knows, nobody else knows. And I find that when we bring seniors and we partner them with other people, with other populations, they're like, wow, you know? I mean, they are wowed. And I, I hope that, you know, people can stay healthy long enough. Another one of my pet projects so that they can continue to help us in the world that we live in. It's kind of messed up.
Very much so.
And I think the elder population plays a huge role in that. One of the other ladies that I work with, she left and she's now directing a nearby council. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one other piece of information. We had done the interviews last week and we had just told everybody beforehand that we weren't going to make a decision that night. And I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight because unfortunately I need to leave in a few minutes.
Okay, we'll probably, we meet on our regular meeting next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
So we'll probably have this wrapped up by Tuesday.
When do you need somebody to start?
Yesterday.
Of course.
If I were chosen, would you allow me a reasonable, you know, I have to give notice.
Well, I think we, yeah, 48 hours.
My boss might come down. No.
That would only be courteous.
No, it would have more time.
Okay, thank you because I have to do things the right way and, you know, that would, that...
We would expect the same courtesy and time.
We'll burn the breads across over.
Thank you, thank you. And the hours again, I'm so sorry, are?
24 sessions.
And I'll have a beaver or something. Okay.
What is our regular day there? You folks would know better than us.
Eight to four.
Eight to four. Same as this.
Fridays, it's eight and 12.
Oh. That's even better. Thank you.
That's when the buildings open, right?
Right.
And then staff stays until...
Until four.
...from one to four.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much for coming.
I again apologize about the time.
Realizing you were coming from Boston, I was not surprised.
Oh, my gosh, I had to bring this thing to the table. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet you too. You want to see a pretty picture? This is a friend of mine who is autistic and why do you like him? Tell me your boy. I got him to do events for our...
Wow.
Yeah. They sense movement. They'll come back and do free events.
Awesome. When I become a senior, then I'll do it.
On his next trip around.
Well, again, I just...
Thank you.
Thanks. Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I have a motion. Then we'll make a decision next Tuesday.
Okay.
Second?
I'll be favored.
And that was to adjourn, right?
Yes.